Lawrence. Passo. There. Gibson. Warren.
Yeah.
Keith.
I need. Into now. Foundation. In happens.
Terminal. Motion.
Passo. Morris. Gibson.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yes.
Yes. Any ordinance? One time put it on here.
Mike.
Oh, Mike.
Well, well, the motion for coordination. Things that I think are the last. Pretty prior. I don't think my experience or my experience with you. So, well, I'm getting to you.
Mike.
I. Change there again. The controlling process.
Yep, I, Mike, if we want to do that, it has to be done for each specific property. Otherwise, we go to the default, which is sealed bid on. So if we want to use that process that you're talking about, the ordinance that you previously sent me a month or so ago. We've got to do it beforehand. So if we want to sell a piece of property and we want to use that format. That process, we need to pass a specific ordinance to that effect for that piece of property.
So.
Just, just the next time we sell a piece of property, we need to remember that if we want to do it with that process, we specifically draft an ordinance for it that way. Okay?
Create a board of six.
And the board, yes, that's true, the board approves.
Okay. Uh, special meetings. Yeah, I put that on air. Um, I tend to agree with the folks that mentioned it's a lot. If we coinc- we have a special meeting that coincides with a committee meeting. So rest to be paid for this conference meeting too, since they're already being paid. Committee meeting. So I'll make a motion that we do not get paid for a special meeting if it coincides with a committee meeting. Second.
Warren D.
Yeah.
Lawrence.
Yes.
Warren.
Yes.
Passo.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yes.
Discuss currently charged for police services in Congress.
I'd ask you, Jay, if teacher, um, who's that called me first? Said, did we have a contract with them? Because what I was going to see was whether or not. They would be helpful enough because we gave place hours versus we were getting seven hundred dollars a month. Would they be interested just to come to maybe pay eight hundred dollars a month if we had an existing contract? But I didn't know when that contract ended, nor did I want to ever have it to where they don't want to have the contract anymore either. So it's when I contacted you and so I'm just curious what you found out.
So, I mean, currently they pay seven hundred. In my opinion, I think it's pretty good where it's at. I don't see. I don't see why would we go to them right now. We had issues when we first took over there, but the main issues over there are kind of. So the conference members, they told me, very damn hard.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, that's perfect. Thank you. You take for a look at that spot. Thank you.
Uh, old business variation.
This is just the status on the fountain. Have we gotten any more donations? Is it gonna happen or do you want to give everybody what they donated to?
Yeah. All right, do we need to make them up? A motion that we give everyone and send to the RIS to give them the money back. We'll try again some other time. Thank you.
Keith.
Yes.
Lauren.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Gibson.
Yes.
Passo. To, Lawrence.
Yeah, this next thing is Christian of honor. That's. Yeah, they'll discuss.
Which is that?
They're discussing one. They're discussing one. That's why. So it's a specific employee, specific employee.
Uh, hiring part-time police job. So we have, uh, right now we have one qualified candidate, uh, training standards for him just to prove him over in payers. I don't know if he'll get passed, uh, for us on soon. Done the background check on the other department side. He's one of the guys. Um, he is qualified. He's not here today. And it's Tim Sullivan. I, I think most of you guys met him at the last, last board. Um, he said he can produce part-time hires here, uh, especially on weekend. We're kind of lacking right now. And, and more nights, so.
Okay.
It's not the anyone in November though.
Was her. Yeah.
Well. Back Friday, but that we should not come back here Friday. Uh, since he's on orders for six months, he'll be, he'll be gone even longer. Uh, still be on military. So we still won't have any computer, um, that can, that can cover for us while he's gone. My opinion is, say Tyler comes back for a month or two, we just don't give hours. You know, we have, we still need that cap on hours that we're working. Um, and then that gives me time also to get the training standards for it to do their investigation. And to approve Tim, uh, to work here because there will be a time gap between when he's hired and when he can actually work the shoot.
I agree. I think we are hiring.
How long does it take to train? Training standards for.
Today, we have lots in a week, uh, definitely.
Well, I mean, we're getting spoiled. It ain't like. You know, like, yeah, once, I mean, we ain't got the hours, but we don't have police presence now, so. It ain't like you're paying Tyler full-time wages anymore. My, my, my only concern is, once again, which, you know, we are paying. An officer that's not putting hours in for us and we don't know exactly when he's gonna come back. Our, that's my, that, it, on board with hiring a part-time police this year. What I'm not on board with is paying for the police and not have everybody on board. That's my only issue, or I would, I would say, you know. I mean, and, and if I'm not taking away that till we found that out and then. We found out that Tyler came back and his last day is gonna be December twenty fifth, then we all move forward. We know how we're gonna do forward. That's my only, but that's just me. This is my only, but I don't support it. If we're still paying somebody. That we don't have, and then we push this guy away and then we don't have anybody. Well, I asked, right? We had, we were in jeopardy.
You asked him this meeting. That's what you asked.
So are we saying that now? I, I don't, we don't know. I mean.
We don't know. That's why I'm waiting on you guys.
I'm gonna second it. I will second. Yeah.
Passo.
No.
Nelson.
No.
Warren.
Stan.
Bees.
No.
Nelson.
Yes.
Lawrence.
Yes.
Three zone. I'm making motion we hire. How, how soon is he gonna start?
He just told you.
But we didn't know for sure. So, you didn't know for sure, right? Well, not yet. We got to give them.
Soon we, until Simon gets his job.
We'll be happy.
I have some time. I'm gonna have more vacations by January. Then there's time that we have coming up.
Okay. All right. Now that I said, okay. Okay. All right.
These are the motion hot.
My second.
Yeah, okay.
Passo.
Yes.
Bees.
Yes.
Lawrence.
More higher needs. That's the motion.
Gibson.
Yeah.
Nelson.
Yes.
Warren.
Stain.
Do we hire? Okay, discuss upcoming purchase of black truck.
Yeah, she's off. Okay, so we are, we, we are all in agreement that we need new, new back truck and we need a new street sweeper to cancel. In four years. Uh, we did send Dallas and Tommy over to look it over. They assured us it is a good quality. They're both a good quality. On that they have, um, replaced new back pump. For back truck and has been certain amount of improvement on it. The problem coming out of finance committee is that we are having a general decision how to pay for this. It's not that anybody's disputing that we don't need the equipment, but exactly how we're gonna pay. Whether we're gonna use some money that we are waiting to come back from EPA. Uh, through chastains that will go to the general fund, right, our water fund. Uh, and right now with that fund is in need. But also that we know that we need for the back truck. It's a imperative thing so we can dig our own puddles. And save ourselves forty-five thousand dollars from having somebody else come in the scope out for lead pipes, correct, Marty? Okay, so the, the issue lies not with the need, but the issue lies with how we're going to pay for it. Between getting money from chastains and the EPA. Versus whether we want to use, we're having a, um, a CD that is coming due in a couple of the next week, seventeen. And taking that money and applying it towards the purchase price, which will give us half. And my concern, as I think it is for Kip and everybody else, we don't want to cash strap village. With having to go get a loan from the bank at eight percent and pay huge, um, huge monthly payments. Of, of upwards of twenty-five or three thousand dollars. Then on top of.
How many CDs do we have? We have four. How, how much each one hundred?
The number of reports.
Yeah, close to a million dollars. Five hundred thousand.
So what, why won't we get?
Well, there's more.
Okay.
Memphis, man. There's more.
Okay, so the, the issue we're having is that we make a good amount of money off CDs and, and that's always good for the village. But we also know that we are looking at with the, uh, the sewer water renovation, what, at a future payment of. Or if I'm wrong, eighty-five hundred a month?
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand.
Eighty-five thousand a year.
Eighty-five forty years.
Yeah.
A month.
So it's, you know, we're, we're putting ourselves in a position where we've got ten thousand dollars going out every month on a payment. And, you know, that's where our conundrum lies in that some of us think that it's better to take that CD that's gonna come due and use it. For, to cut back on payments and also, um, also then if we get money back and goes, comes into the water fund. Or goes into the general fund, we can eventually at some point perhaps recruit some or put that money back into a CD at some later date. Is that correct, everybody? Okay, so that's where we stand.
And we just, and when, and basically when the finance committee kind of having met together and trying to figure out different options. We knew that getting a loan in a month, ridiculous eight percent wasn't gonna be an option. So we wanted to try to find out other different options, but still making sure. But all the other board members are all on board with us getting these two pieces of equipment before we try to figure out exactly. You know, how we're gonna move forward. And I think that's the most important thing right now. We have. We have close to two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars coming sometime within the next sixty days from Chastain and Associates. We need to find out what that number is. So. I would recommend as far as finance committee that we, A, we don't ever borrow money. I don't think we don't have to. You got cash to pay for it. And, and secondly, I don't think we ever need to give us a half of the cash in CDs. You know, I just think that's a bad habit. I think you need to have that, that money over there and not say, let's do this and borrow back and pay. Because what's gonna end up happening, we're gonna run into January and then we're gonna have something else come up and say, well, I guess we're not buying. And I just, I don't think we need to do that. I don't think we need to do that to the village. So I think that's a nice comfort zone. As a matter of fact, I'd like to see even bigger, to be honest with you. But with all that being said, we could make that two hundred thousand dollars of equipment. Without having to borrow money and without having to cash on a CD. We just need to make sure that all the other board members are on board with us.
And, and also.
That's a person.
Question you, can you please inform us when you're finished? Can you inform us what the outcome was of the sending the two guys over to look at the equipment?
Yeah, there was, um, the back truck produced, I don't know, I asked, a hundred nineteen thousand miles on it. Correct, eighteen thousand miles on it. Eighteen thousand miles, um. Well, yeah. They, they just got it on cranium from another municipality. So they put a new main pump on it. All new hoses. Did some, uh, little patchwork inside the, inside the copper and re-coated it. Then the sweeper, sweeper only freshes belts, uh, everything, all the working parts are right now. Yes, I mean, uh, the back truck, oh, actually doesn't have the hydro kit to do the following. So they're putting their padding, they're putting that all on. That's all they're grabbing. So.
And that's what we need to.
You don't tell management, but yeah.
It's awful. The following for investigating, uh, or investigating future grants and all the let's or sign you're getting ready to. And that was very good. On the, the next phase of the project, that was having the company come to do that was a forty-five thousand dollar. So doing our, so that you guys can show us. Potentially say. On the next phase. When his own arm and brakes.
So where did our thirty thousand dollar grant money that we got for this live item service go?
In there.
My only problem was that's why I wanted to hear. How they felt about spending that kind of money is I, I kind of, a little bit get thinking back and. You know, would we be, would we be in the same situation three years down the road that we are in now? We have pieces of equipment that are only four, I, forty, I don't know anything about it, you know, so. And, and then since a heck of a, a lot of money really we're putting out, you know, um. Which, I, I was just, we, we can make it happen with the money. We can ma- we can make that happen. We just need to. I think we need to find out if everybody's on board with us moving forward with that.
Well, I don't, I don't think anybody's in favor of always cashing it CD. That's not our first option. But three thousand dollars a month payments is not an option to me either. You know, 'cause I think when you add that and the, the other payments you're gonna have coming out of the sewer and the water. And it all has to be done. I mean, it's, we're committed to this sewer water renovation and I mean, we have to have. I mean, maybe we, we ask a question of each other. I mean, I don't know how the board feels about cashing in this CD that's coming to and applying it towards the, the equipment. How do you guys feel about that?
I know, I know one thing, it don't make sense to go get an eight percent loan and, and we're only getting five percent off CDs. That's.
Yeah, I know.
That's a no brainer. And like I said, we, we got the money in the CD or we got the money coming back in from Chastain.
The option is that anytime I think we. Happen to find ourselves with a few extra points, which might towards the CD. I mean, that's, I mean, that's just common sense and we do that anyway. Trying to be as efficient as we can. But, uh, I also know that, that, you know, and I'm, I believe you, I'm no expert, but. I think the, the equipment does need to be replaced. That street sweeper looks like a, a rolling death cam, you know?
Like World War Two.
But to answer Kip's concern, the reason we're in this, we haven't done this in tanks. We ran the equipment until it bought and then all of a sudden we gotta buy something else.
And then on the flip side is, I think if you go to use that equipment, as, as large as, as me, it's only. You know, if we're gonna use it, if we're gonna use it on Wednesday, it takes Monday and Tuesday to get it ready to go. While you're burning up some time and management there, you know? So I mean, it's, we're, we're losing money on the equipment anyway.
We'd be a good ass.
I, I agree. And I got my other, our other, your honor, drug is, 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 it's all fifty thousand dollars to. No, I agree.
How much money are we gonna get back? Two hundred eighty, two hundred eighty-one thousand dollars.
For sure.
Yeah. Two, two checks.
Or it needs to go to the water fund.
Correct.
Yeah.
Water and sewage.
She puts out and goes to the water fund. And I, in the G L O. That is chastain engineering fees that is coming back to us and put into the I D P A loan. Which has to be repaid in twenty years.
That's, that's gonna be.
I suggest that we cash this CD for a hundred thousand. When the two eighty-one comes in, we take a hundred thousand of that. I do not want to strap this water fund. No. Because once this project is done, phase one. We are going to have to start making payments of eighty-five thousand dollars a year. For twenty years. Wow.
Well, you know, the sweeper itself, I think, a general, uh, no, no order. The sweeper, it come out, it needs to come out of winter.
Right. But you say this. That the back ten, some of the money.
Back to come out. It's flat from March of the, uh, sweeper needs to come out. Need motion guys. She didn't, like, I said, it's not. It's the exhaust. When it's time for it to be for the. Uh, you see, a year, uh, a year above that. Year of work.
Mark, basically. Try to help the, try to solve. Uh, eighty-five thousand.
Basically. Yeah, I remain, uh.
Or you need, you need to make sure that everybody's forward that we purchasing it and then we're gonna be, it's a, it's a no brainer how we need to pay for it. It's a no brainer.
Well, it's a, it's a problem to do. And tracks, the rest in total.
Two hundred twenty-seventh a month.
When I said to invite, we buy them both together, you need to down to two. We already can't turn to set up. For us.
The paper says it was not two twenty and it just come four.
Well, it gave us a two T was like.
Yeah, yeah.
They really, that's about, we, we here. That will work with the. Two hundred thousand.
Uh, spring involves a big times, uh, summer time, um, when we do. On chip, we pick up the excess rock. We, uh, we do a little, little shoulder work with it. Most time it gets around, it gets around spring and fall pretty often.
I was just thinking.
It's back to yellow. We don't get, we don't get this. Yeah.
So our sweeper gone. What, what, what do we need to do here, folks?
We just need a month.
Well, I don't know if there are risks. No, so. Can we? But we all.
Make a motion. Go ahead and we purchase very quickly. By the use of the CD that is going to be coming due. And the other money is will be taken out of the, uh, the chastain refund. I'm sure I'm not gonna.
We have this person wants to have money coming each day for us.
Yeah.
For them.
And when we do that, we're buying another one hundred thousand dollar CD.
I can't say that right now.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I did not.
No, I mean, that's my motion that we purchase equipment by cleaning, uh, by breaking of the CD or the, the relinquishing of the CD. And, uh, matching that with monies that come from the E P A loan and chastened.
So I don't, so the purchase. At all.
Yeah.
No. Cash to be the CD prior.
Well, that money can, can. Can sit with this. Let them know that that's their sign the balance will become a.
What you're saying, is that?
As soon as EPA.
Right, good.
I'm paying every thousand.
So you have clear, precise.
That's what you've got lots of.
Yeah, I do, but I will let it be. I'm invited. You just have a better idea.
No, I said, I mean, I think.
Well, it's just, and again, we're just, yeah, that thing of funding and when the funding occurs. The, uh. Well, money from Chastain will not filter probably it to J or F.
I'm sure.
So the other option we have is to, if we, if we let the CD lock. And we simply put that money into our amount pending purchases. And we simply put that money into our mountain purchases.
Okay, guys, hey, work it out. No, really.
So that sounds okay? That we, if we relinquish the CD. We put the money in our general, general fund. Until such time that it is, we've received the money from EPA through chastains. And then at which time we purchase both pieces of equipment out of, I know nobody. So that is, that okay? Second.
Gibson.
Yes.
Nelson.
No.
Lawrence. Lawrence.
Yes.
These.
Yes.
Passo.
Yes.
Ford.
Yes.
Alright, this is our, our person shout different headed off, committed to hearts that pick things up and off. Travis, by any means, can't bring three mad skin like that quick.
Consider the questions, I got a photo session with the business partners, so you guys can't make any decisions during the photo session, so is it twenty?
It's coming back out.
Okay, and then.
And then we'll vote.
Thank you.
Yeah, anybody else, they're glad, go ahead, John.
Yeah, a few things here, um, otherwise, that, that grant that you're gonna have a lot of fun on in, first one. Should know that.
Yeah, we won't.
We're not gonna do it.
Okay.
But former.
Yeah.
Okay, the second is, uh. When you guys had that, uh, closed on their house on the strip from the strand. And you opened it and you had eleven hundred always good and two thousand dollar bid. My understanding is how come you guys didn't know that the higher bid should have took it instead of being that bad hair dogs?
Process was, the, the two parties were aware that. Way to conduct one way, but the general population was not, and so to go back to unity, we went back and followed the statute. And general city ordinance, not a specific ordinance, that Mr. Lawrence was, was talking about earlier. So we went back and did it as the regular ordinance. That the village has adopted.
Well, I'm worried.
Yeah.
Absolutely, house in Springfield Street. Lawrence. He was gonna hold on, turn it down, just curious, I don't still stand.
Yes, they did, they're.
So you guys have the report for that?
Yeah.
So the public, see your report.
That was clean, right?
We have a plan to get.
No, 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 so we know our system.
Society more. Yeah.
Society more.
Okay.
Yeah, that's environmental people are down here. Yeah, yeah, it's a non required. No, we're on period now. This is the conference. We're very hard.
Oh.
Anybody else think?
Uh, purple bills. Purple bill.
Nelson.
Yes.
Gibson. Passo.
Yes.
Warren.
Yeah.
Lawrence.
Yes.
These.
Yes.
That'll be important. Yeah, purple, purple, the previous report.
Motion.
These.
Yeah.
Warren.
No.
Nelson. Gibson.
Yes.
Passo.
Yeah.
Lawrence.
Yes.
Lawrence report.
I give the old copy in my report.
Thanks for your report, same, you guys have my copy, uh. Obviously not worth it for the whole time with. Um, it's not a project, not a board.
Morris report.
You guys have, you have to, um, split everything off, I mean. Link set up. We spend all our time locating and locating for, for the over. Um, I've been spending most of my time with the over crew and chastain, so. Um, and we're just.
For nature board.
Just ordinance violations, uh, you just alluded to it, there's like seven or eight new ones that we just, uh, prepared, one is, uh, since been dismissed and been removed. The issue, uh, the mayor told me to go ahead and dismiss it. Um, otherwise, they're all set for January fifteen, uh, we're getting to go on matter, which Mr. Wink, their attorney, uh, his attorney is involved. Uh, and the day before, maybe the day of the previous year, and he sent us a pretty good. Letter, uh, we're going over, but still, there's your mission, which if necessary. Will probably need to place on the January. Uh, air quote version.
Press chief report, comment, anybody got anything?
I do, there are a couple of different things. Um, JB, do we have the committee meetings posted up on the village report? We talked about the.
The group.
Yeah, the group, okay. Alright, well, because all I can ask to put on the agenda, because it's just gonna be certainly a reminder. That each one of the committee chairs is to meet with their, uh, different departments so that we can do the action plan in two thousand twenty five. We all agree that we report that, uh, our next meeting is committees of twenty third, okay? Also too, and I just wanted to mention, um, also the park committee, which is Danny and, uh, and Gary. If you guys wanna look at some dates to quite possibly do something as far as maybe fish at the park kitchen during Lent, maybe, I don't wanna be in competition. With anybody, but, uh, Easter's not until like late April, like the twentieth of April, so if you guys. I will help organize all that and work with you, if you get a date set for the. It'd be nice if we get a couple of dates for the, for the park kitchen. So that's all I had, just the committee meetings, need, and it's gonna be posted off the village website, and our phone numbers are on there too, for the, for the village if they wanna. Reach out and contact you, so that's all I had, thank you, Mr. Ware, thank you. Yeah, I got stuff. Hey, we got the books back from Frank, he'll revise, uh, codes. Got the drafts, uh, we have seven copies. Trustees can pick their copies up as we leave today. In the front of the door, um, there is a, it's like a ten page document. It's all highlighted and numbered and coincide with the numbers throughout the ordinance book, I need you guys to go through that. Look at it, make sure you're, we're good with it. Uh, there's some comments in there that Frank made, it's some things that we need to do, some things that we did very well. And, uh, but I just need you guys to look at it for the next committee meeting that way, so we can discuss it. And then we can get Frank down here and we can get this staying pipeline, okay? Thank you, Gary. Worth it, you can all get copies of that? You will get them before you leave tonight.
President report, comment. Motion to go on the code there.
Motion.
Lawrence. Passo.
Yeah.
Gibson.
Yeah.
Warren.
Yes.
These.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.